...and Commission City Council meeting of October 24th at 6:00 PM. Nora?
Okay. Welcome and welcome to other folks in the audience. It's great to see some folks here. So tonight, we are going to talk about overnight accommodations development standards. I'm going to do a very brief staff presentation, assuming that you've all read all the material, and there's been a lot of it, especially emails back and forth.
Carly, you have a spot.
Oh, yeah. You can be.
And Joel, we do have a seat.
And then I think there was then some of the things that based upon the emails that have been flying around, some of the things that I think you probably will want to talk about is metering, size, scale, height, whether we want to use that to regulate the types of applications and size of applications that we get. Overlay versus zoning, which is an issue I really thought we had addressed before, but there continues to be some discussion about it. Then the general discussion of other development standards and then next steps. So, the Planning Commission City Council gave direction in August as to what this effort to for the come up with development standards should include. And we took this right from the motion that was made to approve the ordinance, and it required us to follow up on these items. Energy efficiency, density and size, aesthetics, height, bulk variation, color of materials in view shed, landscaping and buffering, mixed-use requirements, water carrying capacity, existing infrastructure capacity, and contribution to cumulative traffic connectivity contribution to non-motorized micro-vehicle transportation network. So that's kind of a mouthful. And we started out with a pretty big list. And what we've done is we've had quite a number of discussions with both our Planning Commission and the County Planning Commission. I've gone to although one of their meetings to talk about this. So we, our Planning Commission met twice in September, once in October. And then the County Planning Commission has met twice in September and twice in October, most recently being on Tuesday. I attended most of those meetings, including the Tuesday meeting. And then the County Council and the County Planning Commission had a joint work session on October 2nd. They're having another one next week at 10:00 in the morning on Tuesday. So I will be going to that as well. So that's all the work. They've been refined a lot through those processes. And the goal is, we want to come up with development standards so that when we can accept new development applications, we're happier with the product that we get. And that, you know, some of the issues have been size and boxiness and physical appearance, and also that we were lacking in commercial diversity because the highest and best use in the C4 and in the RC has been to do hotels. So that's why we did mixed, we were looking at mixed-use requirements.
Through four. I think you just forgot the four. Isn't that today?
Oh.
That's County Council.
No, that's County.
County. Oh, County Council.
Yeah. Sorry, but yeah, I can see I did that. So it's sort of a fine line between getting the product that we want, not making it so cost prohibitive for somebody to come in and ask for an overnight accommodation. I think the future and what we're seeing is the most recent ones that have been built, including the Hoodoo and the Worldmark, which are both huge. And I think there's some sentiment that we kind of want to keep a smaller scale that people can, other than large corporations, can achieve. So we don't want to make things so onerous that we get no applications or that it's way too expensive. But we definitely want a different kind of product than we've been getting and not as much of it. So, moving forward, we get input from you all tonight. And then the goal is for me to draft language to the C2 zone and the RC zone to allow new overnight accommodations to apply under new development standards, just for those two zones. That's where we're starting. So we have an in-town zone, and then we have the RC zone. And then following up, we'll look at the C4 and the C3 and those zones as well. But we have to start somewhere. So that's the direction we've decided to go. We will have an additional Park Planning Commission work session on November 7th. On November 21st, we hope to have a public hearing and possible recommendations of the City Council on code amendments. And then there will be a public meeting and possible adoption by you folks in December. So these are the top issues for discussion that I came up with today just based upon some of the emails that are floating around. There are also lots of other things we could talk about, including some of our transportation, our concepts about mixed-use, open space, civic space, art. Because that's, we've kind of sort of consolidated those, and they will be applied differently in the RC zone than the C2 zone. We still think mixed-use in the C2 zone, first-floor commercial is really important, or first-floor employee housing. And then the potential for, you know, second-floor overnight accommodation units. So, that's it. So I'm going to let you guys go for it.
So I'd like to open the discussion with the metering because we, as a Planning Commission, have not spent much time on that at all. So the council would like to kind of fill us in on where you'd like to see us go with that, if you want to do that, and where you'd like us to start.
The county already meters for their high-density overlay. They will only, they accepted applications, but once they approve a maximum of so many square feet or units, then they cut off applications for that year. So that is a way to do it, is to do an annual metering. And it could be based either on square footage or on number of units. I included in your packet also a little chart of sizes of hotels just so you could get a sense for what size what was. And in addition to this, the county the other night talked about some of the smaller hotels like the Apache and Sage and some of the older, smaller ones. And those are more in the 15,000-square-foot range, for reference. Where the County Planning Commission is coming down is limiting any new project size to no more than, I think they ended up with 20,000 square feet for any one building or 40,000 square feet for a total project area. And again, they're going to talk more specifically about that.
Your Planning Commission feels quite strongly.
Just dot it out. Is it a plug-in?
It's, yeah.
Thank you. Yeah, it seems like it does that all the time.
You want to pull up between? You have enough tail for it. If you want to pull it between your cord.
Well, I'll speak to the metering. I want to make it as simple as possible. I guess I'm not as concerned about having a metering metric if an applicant complies with all of the other items that we're putting on them. Limitations of the project size, the building size, that they're mixed-use, that they've got other things that are like retail space. I guess I'm not as concerned about number. But that's just my opinion.
But I think one of the, one of the purposes of metering is to limit the amount of development per year.
Right. So you're trying to limit the rate of change.
Right.
Yeah, I guess I'm just not as concerned about that. If we're controlling for all of the other stuff, I'm not as concerned about that, that metric, that metering. That's just me.
What do City Council members think?
I guess the general question is, would you like to limit the amount of development per year? Yes or no?
Act, I think, directly limit the amount of development per year, which I think this does, whereas some other things would inherently limit the amount of development passively.
So I would like to be sure that we're solving for the outcomes that we want to achieve and that were identified during the moratorium. So I went back to the boards that were created by Landmark for their first, or the April 30th public hearing, which has some more context, which was helpful for me to be reminded of, including guiding principles, which we haven't looked at in a while, and I realize it's, we've got an hour. But, so one of the things they talk about is, and which we've talked about endlessly, or not endlessly, but repeatedly over the decades, is economic resiliency and diversification and equity. And we also heard from many, many citizens that they would like to see, they're feeling overwhelmed by the rapid growth in tourism over the last five to 10 years. So I feel like, and I feel like there's, I mean, we're obviously a tourism community. This town, this municipal organization largely runs on tourist dollars. So I feel that it, I want to acknowledge that and that our future success as a community is largely dependent on keeping that healthy. But at the same time, we have traffic problems that we need to solve for. I feel like the standard, right now, we're focused on standards for individual projects. But I feel like, as with our wastewater and other things, we solve them communally, not on a site-by-site basis. And so, while we can ask them to provide some, some solutions to the transportation piece, it's also up to us as the city and the county to really step in possibly with a shared shuttle system. But we are, as far as I know, we're not particularly, we haven't made much progress on that. And so I feel like there's this larger conversation, like what do we ask individual projects to do? And then what are we doing to support them in an overall solution that addresses the tourism impact so that we can continue to have this great community for our residents and a great experience for our visitors while still all-growing?
So I don't know whether that's a yes or a no.
Yeah. What does that have to do with metering?
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't answer the question.
I don't have to answer that question because this is the first meeting that this City Council has had on this in months. And so, and we may not be able to get through this in an hour, so.
No, I agree.
Yeah.
But what I'm hoping to accomplish tonight for the Planning Commission is for us to have a path. So if, if the council feels like we need to discuss metering, then we will. If the council feels like we know whatever we put into code will passively handle the number of developments, then we won't touch it. But I think that as Planning Commission and staff, I think we need to figure out from your direction whether we should discuss it or not.
Mm-hmm.
So.
Right. So I feel like metering is a possible tool, but I feel like it's messy. Like how do you establish priority? What is that number? And I realize I could punt to you all and ask you to solve for it. I feel like the metering might be considered in conjunction with overlays versus zoning because I feel like a legislative step is in effect a, also a tool that could, could serve that purpose. Which has its own challenges.
With your permission, I'll chime in.
Sure.
The short answer is that yes, I do support metering restrictions on building size and so forth. And the possibility of overlay application tools, much as the county has done. Whether or not we will end up using any of those remains to be seen in my eye. But right now, I think they're tools I'd like to have in my grab bag if I need to use them. And here's a conundrum that I'm up against. No, I want to thank you guys and all you guys for assembling the list of standards and so forth. What I did very briefly was went through ones that I thought would work and ones that I thought that wouldn't. Then I imagined the new hotel application that would come in. What sort of standards would they see? And what would that hotel look like? And two or three years down the road, when new hotels get built to those standards, what would change? And the answer is unfortunately, not much, all right, in terms of what the residents of town are concerned with. What I saw was, you guys all saw this, is a few years ago, didn't hear too much about this until all of a sudden, one day, we had traffic jams in the street. Nobody could go anywhere. And Moab, as you guys know, is a valley town. Everybody has to get channeled right through the middle of the road. You can't easily go around. And so, for me, adding more accommodations, more, more visitors into town, despite all our best efforts to make them amenable, still profitable to owners and so forth. And I do want to keep the health of the OA community healthy. I don't want to drive people off with uncertainty. But nonetheless, more OAs, in any shape, form, or fashion, means more traffic in town. And the widening of highway will help. It could be much my concerns will go away. But that's my main thing. In other words, we can make, we can require energy-efficient and, you know, water-efficient hotels and so forth and all that kind of good stuff. But it doesn't really address what most people see as a root problem of just too many visitors in town on any one day, particularly during the high season. So if tools that I can use to slow down the growth is a tool I'd like to have in my grab bag.
Thank you. Ladies?
So that's a yes for metering for you? Because this is about like the max for the, for the year. I'm, I think that's a favorable thing to try to accomplish. Sitting on the side trying to deal with the state, I'm also wary of,
Yeah.
of legislative repercussions. So, and I, and I want to be aware of that. Because, I mean, I'd love to know what we really are able to accomplish and for our town.
I think if we don't have a way to measure what is happening, number one, our own residents are going to say you didn't do anything. Because if it still seems like it's the same rate and it's overwhelming to them, we've got to have something, we've got to have something data-driven to say, no. This is, this is where we're capping it this year, and this is where we'll cap it next year. It's very possible that just the amount of buildable land in the city limits is going to limit us a little bit more than the county. The county has much more buildable land. But I think we've got to have a way to measure what's happening, that we can report to citizens. So yes, that's a yes.
And I'll just add my two cents. I'd like to have it explored as a tool and then obviously, like Karen, have more legal advice on to what extent we can use it. My big thing is, a lot of this for me is a question of what we ultimately end up with. If, you know, like I think the mayor is envisioning and what we had all hoped for, we ended up with a rock-solid set of standards that where we could guarantee, and I think this was our objective, that everybody who came on with a new project would be producing something that was net positive for the community. That would be one thing, and I would feel the need less for metering. But not knowing exactly what we're going to end up with, it seems helpful to have the metering as a tool. I mean, one of my main concerns about the metering is we still haven't gotten enough of our water studies back to have a discussion about water. And we all know from the numbers, overnight accommodations use 16%, a lot less than residents do. But it's been a big question in the community of like, well, where are we with water? And when are we going to run out? And I do feel like in the run-up through all of this, I do need a report on water that helps me understand where we're at. And I understand we might have to wait a little longer for data. But I still am not sure that I have a good base understanding of what we're using now versus what we've committed to, projects that are in the pie invested and what they're going to use. And a lot of what residents have talked about is the 30% growth that we know is coming from projects that are already vested. So that's, I guess, another reason I feel like the metering will be helpful because we don't know the impact of all of that growth yet. So even though it may seem like we have a little more control, I don't, I don't know if we know what the new reality looks like after the 30% sets in. So I guess that's it.
Okay, thank you.
Can I just really quickly reflect on what Toni said? Because regardless of where we land on the decision of metering versus not metering, I think that the comment that you made, like, we're going to need to communicate really effectively what's already, what was approved prior to the moratorium, and then what is approved at what rate after. And so wherever we land on that, if there's like a leaderboard or I don't even know what the visual representation would look like that could be in the planning, or just how we message that is going to be really important regardless.
We could have one of those thermometers.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah. Okay.
We could do a dashboard, you know?
A dashboard.
That's what it's called, a dashboard. I have no idea how to do one, but it can be done.
A dashboard.
Okay, so thank you for those. Next item I'd like to discuss is whether or not you'd like to have limitations on the project size and/or the building size in those projects. We have at the Planning Commission discussed this briefly, and we've talked about some very large lots out on the north end of town that if we limit the project size, then they will just ask to have their property split into two so they can build two instead of one. And so those are some of the things that we need to consider when we go through this process. And if we do need to make some limitations, how are we going to implement them? Does it matter whether or not they cut their properties in twos or threes or four partials so that they can put in more projects? So I don't know what kind of thought you've put into that, but I would like to hear your opinions on that.
I feel like I need a little bit more advice. Thanks, thanks you guys. The information was great in the agenda summary and the breakdown of, you know, square footage, some examples, and how building size has increased over time and room size has decreased. So that was all really helpful to understand. So I feel like I definitely like the idea of going in the direction of the county. I, I feel like I need a little more information or guidance on choosing if that number is 15 to 20 like theirs or, or a little bit different. And then in terms of splitting and having multiple projects, I guess I probably need a little more information and advice on that because I have a hard time anticipating what the likelihood is that. And then if all of the standards are solid enough and every one of the projects has to have mixed-use and is benefiting something, maybe that's not as bad. I don't know. So I guess I need help. I have to digest that a little bit.
Right. Allison, can I interject? Just something that has come up a lot in our discussion on Planning Commission with regards to size and scale of the building. At least something I'm always trying to keep in mind, I think the other commissioners are as well, is making sure that nothing that we're doing or changing in the code is arbitrary in any way. And I feel like we maybe have the potential to get a little bit into that territory when it comes to size and scale. So making sure that we're not just saying, well, it sounds good to have smaller developments, and then maybe we're going to encourage more local business because you can't get the big-box hotels coming in if it's under a certain size. But also, we have limited buildable land, and we don't just want to sort of arbitrarily limit something, especially if we are, I think the Planning Commission's goal is being, getting in a lot more. I think our overarching goal is that we want to incentivize other kinds of commercial development in the course of this with mixed-use and maybe some employee housing or resident housing. And that we're not just saying, oh, we, we don't like size just because we don't like size. Maybe it's, okay, character is something that's come up. Moab character, that's super valid, and I think that's also defensible when we have those standards. But also realizing we might not like the big box, but environmentally, it's friendlier to have one building instead of several buildings spread out over an area. So those are all just kind of, that's a little basis of what we've had in our discussion, if that's helpful at all for you guys thinking about it.
Thanks. That does help.
And then are we separating these, these size limitations or this even this discussion? Like the C3, C2 compared to, okay. I mean, because I know at the very onset, we were like, oh, you know, small boutique hotels downtown, how fabulous, like, you know, business down on the bottom floor and, and then overnight rentals on the top. I mean, that was sort of this, like, idealic vision we had and, you know, green walkways. But, yeah, like the north, the RC zone, I mean, how feasible. I mean, like you said, it is more environmental to have a larger building. But I listened to your discussion that you guys, your last Planning Commission discussion, and, you know, some of the ideas of like having a bodega or, I mean, this was at the Holiday Inn, they have a little market. It's a crap hole. I mean, like, there is, sorry, not, in St. George, not here. I'm just sorry. But like, I mean, you could buy a bag of Cheez-Its. Is that going to be like part of that, you know, the commercial space that you include in that? I mean, because that's not what we were trying to accomplish. Because any hotel can do that. They can shave, they can sell shaving cream and razors and toothpaste. Is that going to be the retail space that we're okay with? I mean, I'm, I'm hoping it's, we have higher standards in that.
I think our vision was more a dedicated, separate commercial space that of course the hotel owners could own and operate, but it would be something that was functional outside of just hotel guests. Where of course, if it's like in the northern corridor, the RC zone, the, what it would encourage and kind of our, our big thought in that zone was make it a little more self-sustaining, which would help sort of traffic, which would help, you know, congestion, which would help. So if someone who's staying at a hotel north of town can get their dinner there, can buy their trail mix for the day, can, you know, get basic groceries, it would prevent kind of that inflow and outflow from town and make it a little more self-sustaining. But I, yeah, I think making it so it's, I'm not sure how we would do that. Nora, you probably have a better idea, but I think that's valid. You don't just want like, you know, the little stand that all hotels have in their lobby. You want it to be something that's proper functioning.
I think in the, in the RC zone, it's a little bit tough because we don't want to force people to put in a certain square footage of commercial if it's going to fail. And we had input at the county joint meeting about most, apparently most restaurants in hotels don't make money. They, but they have them there because they have to in the big picture. So we don't want to make people do things that, that don't make sense and are just in spaces that are just going to be empty. So out in the, in the, the RC zone, I think we're talking about things like potentials of restaurants or what more and more are going to is a grab-and-goes, you know, with microwaves and stuff like that. And then some other things. Certainly, if people want to come in and do something more creative than that, we'd love it. I think we're really concentrating our mixed-use stuff in the downtown area. And certainly in C2, it's a commercial zone. So they should have commercial on the first floor. And so that's the direction that we're going in town. C3 includes Main Street. And then we get into a whole different, pretty complicated set of discussion items as to height and redevelopment and all those kinds of things that we'll have to tackle. But at this point, I'm trying to con, I'm trying to narrow it to the C2 and the RC.
Yeah, and I would like to refocus here. I think that our discussion with the limitations on project and building size will basically be in the RC. It'll be, basically be the north end of things when we have very large lots. And so do we want another Worldmark coming in? Or do we want something that we can limit its building size or project size?
So I was thinking about why I would go to a hotel in the north corridor. And I would go if there was a really cool rooftop bar and restaurant. I would go if I was dropping my kid off for daycare or my dog off for doggy care while I went on a hike. I would go if it was where I was catching the shuttle to go into Arches. So I think that there's, that it is a different zone. I think of like size, and I think of a really big roof print would be a lot of like rainwater that you could catch. And I'm not really worried about retail necessarily on the first floor as I am retail in as part of the development. So, well, I guess that's my two cents for that. I'm not, I'm not as concerned about building size or project size as I am a percentage of what the mix would be between actual overnight accommodation and other. And, and I would hope that what we develop is something that we as locals could actually...
And I would hope that what we develop is something that we as locals could actually enjoy as much as visitors because then the north corridor could turn into this like authentic place where locals go to and take some stress off of Main Street.
And I don't want to spend much time on this, but one of the reasons it's important to me to have the small size and the mixed use on the north side is we've moved ahead with assured housing and it is possible someone is going to be housed down there and I just don't want them to have to go too far for their everyday services. So that's just one reason it's important to me to have some mixed use down there. Also, we've discussed community nodes and I just, otherwise I don't know how we don't end up with the north end of town just being a strip mall of, yeah.
Let me throw in my, I agree with Emily. I'm not so wild about requiring hotels to have space for other businesses on their first floor, but I do like having those businesses around. Kayla and I talked, for example, about one way to try to mitigate traffic flow is to provide out in the north, we're talking about the RC zone now, attractions, if you will, of their own. In other words, people come into town and they stay at a motel out there. Rather than having to get in their car and fight traffic to get downtown, just have a nice, you know, a wise selection of restaurants and stores, bookstores and that kind of thing out there so they don't have to come in. And it's for that reasons I'd like to keep hotels small. I don't think of it primarily in my mind when I'm talking about reducing sizes and so forth. I have hotels in mind. What I'm really trying to get away from, I guess, is a typical three-story Radisson hotel, if you will, that we see so much of here in town, particularly if they're corporate-owned. And I would like to encourage local stuff if we can. And what else was I going to say? I guess that's it because I can't remember what else I was going to add.
So you would like a discussion on limitations of projects and building size?
Oh, yeah. In terms of number of rooms, that's what, oh, smaller, thank you. Smaller hotels. In other words, the list that Nora gave us was typically 100 rooms or more. Oh, I know what it was. So here's the image that I have in mind. Forgive me, I know I'm off the wall here, but my wife and I went to Hilo, Hawaii, you know, a year or two ago. And we stayed in a little tiny motel that had maybe 20, 30 rooms and cats running into our bedroom and mango fruit out in the driveway. And it was really cool. And you would walk right from there to the nearest restaurant and stores and so forth. And it was a thoroughly enjoyable experience as distinct from being in a big hotel with a world of asphalt all around it, where you got to get in your car and drive someplace else. That's the kind of character I'm looking for.
So one thing that we could think about, and probably this is probably down the line, but we could think about taking the RC zone and carving out a portion of it to be a different commercial zoning that doesn't allow overnight accommodations to try to encourage different kinds of, of commercial uses out there.
You mean like, so you'd have overnight in one parcel and commercial on the other?
Possibly.
I like the mix.
I agree.
I have to walk from one place to, I mean, drive.
Decide whose parcels get carved out.
Right.
And the issue is that if you have, if a developer has a choice between putting in a hotel and putting in a restaurant, they're going to put in a hotel. Yeah, that's where the money is.
But we're trying to, we're trying to, through development standards, at least get a better product.
Right.
Which some folks will choose not to do.
Okay, so I'd like to stay on task here. So Kayla, project size, building size?
So I'm disinclined in general to pursue that. I think using other standards will achieve aesthetic and other desired outcomes.
Okay.
Better and more directly than that. We might consider just like an outside limit on building size because at a certain point they may become so objectionably large. I'm not sure what that would be, but just sort of an outside. Because I realize that just for the primary facade, there's going to be, there's likely to be some sort of requirement that they be broken up. But still, at the same, you can see the other sides as you, as you pass them and so, and those could end up being rather large and monolithic and still create a similar effect that we're trying to, I have the impression we're trying to avoid, so.
So just, I'm not sure that I can understand if you don't want to limit the building, the size of the building, you want to limit the portion of the building that can be seen from the roadside?
No, I'm just thinking that if we don't limit it up, we could end up with bigger buildings than we actually want.
So yes or no?
Square footage limitation.
It might be a high-end square footage limitation, but not like down to 25,000, like, more like 125,000.
And keep in mind, we are, we're not talking about the downtown core right now.
Yeah, I'm talking about RC.
Yeah, for sure.
So is there an example of a, of a, of something, a building in town where you wouldn't want it to be bigger than?
I don't. One of the questions that I asked Nora, which I think got shared with you, is whether or not doing a visual preference survey had been considered as a tool for us to talk about this. Because it seems like when we get into quantitative standards, it's hard to necessarily know what the outcomes of this sort of facade treatment or this sort of material percentage actually means. And if we approach it from the other standpoint or just looking at a carefully curated selection of images, my understanding is that often audiences will come to consensus much more easily and then standards can be developed based on that rather than trying to start with the numbers and guess what they might result in.
Well, one, one building that's always a really good building to use because it's our building is City Hall, because then nobody gets offended if we're like pointing out. As soon as I asked that, I got a little nervous. But what is the square footage of the footprint of the building and then times two? Maybe that's a number that we could share and we can maybe use, use that as a metric, like.
What's the square footage of the Worldmark?
270,000.
270,000. 270,000 square feet.
270? And then the Henry Shaw is going to be 115,000?
It's big, too. Yeah.
So you know what would be helpful to me is, is I can look at these numbers and they don't mean a whole lot to me when I'm looking at a building. My brain doesn't function that way, I guess. I would like to see some images. I would like to see just some images of a walkable community that has mixed use, who's doing it well? And how, and then you can tell me how big those buildings are and it will make more sense to me.
I think that's kind of what Kayla was saying, like that would, maybe we'd come to a consensus better if we had that as an example, saying yes, no, okay, and then what are the parameters that all the, the mostly yeses fall within?
And so I would like, go ahead.
It might bring to light, too. I mean, some of these are similar square footage, but if they've done different facades, one may look monolithic where, yeah.
The Wingate looks a lot bigger than a lot of other hotels. 50 some thousand square feet, for example, just because of the unbroken facade, the way that it's lined up from the highway.
I agree. We are talking about requiring four-sided architecture and the facade variation on all sides of the building.
Right. So I would like to hear from Toni and Karen, whether you think the discussion about project or building size is important.
Toni or Ronnie?
Toni.
Oh, I just, I just said.
Yes, was that your yes?
Yes.
Okay.
I need pictures.
I just want to be clear.
I look, I look at the pictures better.
Karen?
Yes, I think size matters.
I was wondering.
I was getting away from that. Trying to avoid that.
Other than me would say that.
Okay, thank you. Third item, and both Nora and I thought this has been discussed and decided. Planning Commission was assuming that we were going for city code and not overlay zones.
Yeah, for just the, changing the base zoning rather than applying overlays.
So discussion on that?
We've had a bunch of discussion on this.
And just to be clear, because I feel like the overlay zone is a zone. So when you say overlay zone, can you just be?
It's an overlay. You can call it a zone or not a zone. But it, what overlays do is they provide, they provide an extra level of regulation. So you still have the base zoning standards and for some reason you're putting on an extra level in certain areas. And it could include multiple zones. For example, our stream corridor and floodplain, we have a flood, a protection zone that's actually shown on our zoning map. And that's an overlay zone. It has additional requirements above and beyond what the underlying zoning might be. It's also common to do it for aesthetic purposes, for lots of other things that relate to natural features like geology and, you know, that kind of stuff.
But with this overlay zone, would it, would, would every development project come to council for final approval or are we move, have we moved past that and said, we took conditional uses out? We don't want that legislative piece.
Yeah, so that's the direction that I have gotten in the past from this, these two groups is that to make it as simple as possible and as obvious as possible to developers that we should modify the zones so that when they open up the code, they see the zones, they know what's expected and they can do it.
Regardless of whether it's in the code or as an overlay in the code.
Right, exactly.
Be in the code.
You have a clean set of rules.
Right.
Regardless of, which would overlay a zone.
The other approach.
I just wanted to make sure that that was super clear.
So we could certainly do an overlay zone and have that same general philosophy, but you'd have to identify where that overlay zone is being placed so that people have a reasonable expectation that they probably will be able to get some kind of overnight accommodation if they meet the standards. What the county is doing is they created a zone, an overlay.
An overlay and then there's a legislative decision. That's why I asked because I didn't want it.
And then, then anybody can, right now, anybody can ask for it, or at least once the moratorium is lifted or whatever. You can ask for that overlay to be designated to your parcel. And it's basically a rezone process. And the county, like they're doing with their high-density overlay, they require applicants to come in with a pretty detailed set of plans for that before they'll grant them that, that zoning designation to that specific parcel.
You said we're not, we're not interested in that, right?
That's what we have said.
Initially, that's what we've said and that's what we've heard. Now, there are advantages to having additional discretion. And all I can do is communicate to you my experience and then you guys can decide what you want to do and I'll structure it that way, that's fine. My experience has been that when you leave something like that discretionary on a lot-to-lot basis, that you're creating lopsided expectations from the adjacent property owners and from the developer. Adjacent property owner thinks you can do two units, the developer thinks they can max out. Creates conflict automatically just by that very structure. And that as property values go up, lawsuits will get much more common. And developers will have a more difficult time really trying to understand what they can do with their parcel. And those have advantages and disadvantages with the overlay, if you, that kind of discretion. If you decide to go with that kind of discretion, I would ask that you come up with very specific findings about, that you have to make in order to designate them. So you're not just saying, oh, this is prettier than this one. And it becomes a beauty contest, which is exactly, in my experience, what it has become. And we did this in Summit County and it, needless to say, it was a nightmare. And it was based on community benefits. But whichever one gave us more community benefits won. And it was not, it was a very difficult process that created conflict and lawsuits.
Really quick question. City code, on the other hand, you read the code and you do what it says. There's no bargaining, there's no pleading.
Well, there's always, there always is.
There's interpretation, but other than that, it's, it's, it's not a legislative decision.
Can I just ask a clarifying question? Oh, no, it's okay. So in the county example, if, if you get an application you ask for something kind of specific, how is that not contract zoning?
Uh, that's, I'm not going to address it because I really don't know.
No, it's fine. I just wanted to understand. I will work on my own understanding of that. Okay, thank you. I'm, I'm, I'm fine without an overlay. Thank you.
So is there any city council member out there who still feels like the overlay is the way to go versus putting this information in city code?
I'm still, I'm still asking, well, Nora, forgive me because I hear what you're saying and, and I can appreciate the complications. And I like the additional control. I'm just sitting here trying to think, under what circumstances would I deny an OA application to an overlay, given that you've already got standards sitting out there anyway? I mean, the first one that comes to mind is Joe just built his hotel out there last year. And now Jim wants to build next door and the same thing. And you say to yourself, and meanwhile, the neighbors nearby are whining to death and there's more traffic out on the road, blah, blah, blah. And so when Jim comes in front of council, he goes, no, Jim, sorry, you're out of luck. You know, Joe beat you to it. And, and it's not at all fair to me that would legally stand up, first of all. And it, and what I don't want is a lot of uncertainty and to chase investors and owners away from town. I don't want boarded up homes, boarded up businesses and so forth. But I like the additional control. So maybe in the example that I just painted, maybe the metering idea would, in other words, you could, you could establish for a particular geographical area, a zone, say no more than, I don't know, can't do this either, no more than four new, not more than, well, they would do this with the high density.
Hundred thousand square feet.
Not more than, yeah, not more than 200 new rooms, whatever, whatever the number might be. And you could use that as a way of avoiding, and that way at least the developer would know upfront. So does that make any sense? I mean, as a way of.
You got it.
Yeah.
It would help.
And I would invite you to go to, at some point, go to a county planning commission meeting as they try to work through their high-density overlay. Because I know that it's frustrating from an applicant's standpoint, not that, I mean, I know that it is. And, and it's, it's tough for the planning commission, too, trying to get a balance on the right amount of detail and.
And it'll become, it'll become tough for the legislative body as well.
Yeah, the legislative body ultimately, yeah.
See, I've had phone, I've had conversations with, with certain planning members over there who, who think that we're making a terrible mistake by not having this tool in ours.
I understand.
And I'm trying to sort it all out.
And 15 years ago, 20 years ago, I might have said that, too. I just now have experience that, that I'm aware of. So I, I feel a professional obligation to share that with you. And we can go however you want to go.
Joel and Chris, do you have anything to add to that?
Well, if you adopt a legislative approach for every new development under your land use code, an overlay, where essentially it's a new set of rules that are going to apply in every case, there are some problems with lack of predictability. And I do recognize the, the neighbor concerns are going to come to the forefront because by definition, those kinds of, they're going to be bigger projects, they're going to have bigger impacts. And you're going to see more of those types of objections, what I, from neighboring affected landowners. If you treat this as purely a legislative decision, if every one of these applications is, has a degree of negotiation and, and design that's sort of customized for that particular project, you're, you're going to have a lot more discretion. And your decision-making will be more likely to hold up. But there's always the concern that if the standards aren't clear enough, you have these kinds of, you know, vague regulations that, that in itself can provoke disputes. So that's one concern that I have. If you have clear standards, you can apply them on a project-by-project basis. When somebody comes in for a site plan, they're going to know what's required, expected of them. There's always going to be a certain amount of discretion for things like landscaping and, and dedications of roads and open space and that sort of thing. But it tends to be a little clearer. I don't know how you.
I, I agree with Chris and I think that the means to an end can be achieved through your other ideas that you already have on the board. I don't know that the overlay is necessary. I think you can get to the same end using the other ideas you're already using and it's clear to everyone and it's less likely to be litigated. and it's clear to everyone and it's less likely to be litigated.
I was concerned about the county approach because I, I just, it seemed kind of clunky to me. It seemed like it had too many steps, too many, it just was confusing. And, and I just don't know how that works here. And as these land use decisions, the stakes get higher. What we're seeing, and just me from the contesting these kinds of disputes, is that people are fighting them earlier and earlier stages and you end up having these kinds of processes that are drawn out and more potential for appeals.
Well, and I just want to say, the county has separate issues than we have. I mean, they have different growth issues than we have and they have different land development than we have. And so I don't want to sit here and act like I don't agree with them doing that. I don't. What works for them, great. It may not work for us. And I don't want to sit here and act like I think they're making a mistake. I don't think that. It may be what's best for what land they have that can be developed and that's a good way to go forward. I think with the city, with our current boundaries with the land that we have, with the tools that we have up there outside of the overlay, I prefer the, within the code laid out, everyone knows the rules. It just leaves us in a lot safer place for the city standpoint to enforce those rules and to uphold them if they get challenged.
I was going to say one other thing that kind of echoes that, which is that, yeah, there's a finite amount of land that's developable in these areas that we're talking about. And I think, you know, there's only so many parcels. We have an idea of who the developers are likely to be. You may be able to come to a pretty good idea of what, what to expect up there on the north corridor, for example. What's, what can you plan for, what's realistic and what do you want to, and you can shape that with the policies that you enact.
Thank you. So can we move ahead with city code and, and kind of limit the discussion on overlays?
Can I just make a brief statement? So just to be clear, because it's been raised several times, I was okay with the, not doing the overlays for what we was approved at the end of the moratorium, which was basically legitimizing or continuing to uphold the legitimacy of existing uses. But my, that was the extent of it. And I am okay not using overlays based on all the reasons that have been presented here. But, but the standards have to be good. And so in terms of providing direction to the planning commission, I know that I have been in the awkward situation where I, there have been code changes that have been presented to council that I have supported in concept, but I have been uncomfortable with the precision in the language. And, and this is really important, so, so not, not sure what else to say about that. I'll, I feel like, I think this may be a little easier in the RC zone than in the C2 zone for version one. So if you want to limit your work more, then maybe just focusing on RC in the next, because at this point, the timeframe is really short.
Yeah. And we can always do more. I can also tell you, and this is related, that the county planning commission is leaning toward asking the county commission to identify opportunity zones or not opportunity zones, compatibility zones, eligibility zones, that's it. So actually defining physical areas where they would consider applying the overlay to individual parcels. So that at least it's narrowed down a little bit. And that is an option as well.
Is everybody else on council ready to move forward with city code instead of overlays? Great. Okay, so it is 6:54. We have talked about three of our four main topics today.
But that was really good work.
The fourth one is a wild one.
That was an awesome meeting.
Yes, she's amazing.
And you guys have a 7 o'clock meeting, so can we adjourn, adjourn the joint city council planning commission meeting?
Can I ask one question? I just want to know next steps. So like, would we plan another workshop and I might suggest a two-hour if possible to, to move through?
Yeah. I, I think that's a really good suggestion and I will work with Summer and others to figure out when we can do that.
Does the planning commission open to like a lunch workshop to go through developments?
Many of them can't, yeah.
So it'll be in evening?
We got jobs.
Yeah. And maybe we can come to you at your meeting time.
Okay.
Yeah. The other thing is-
The 7th is our next meeting, right?
Yeah, the 7th and the 21st of November. And we also have to consider whether or not we're comfortable with being very different from the county in terms of our development standards. But we'll get to that at the next meeting.
I like having you guys come up from time to time. This is great. Thank you so much for running the meeting.
Anything else before we adjourn?
Thanks for all your work on this.
Okay, I'd like to adjourn the joint meeting at 6:55 PM. Thank you, everybody.
Thanks, Allison.
Thank you, Allison.